April sixteenth, twenty twenty five. We'll call this meeting to order. We're going to consider the minutes of the February nineteenth, twenty twenty five, meeting. There are no additions or corrections. We'll consider a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those minutes are approved. I want to go out of order on the agenda. Back in February, we had some extended discussion about code enforcement. And so I asked Judge Sparks to come today and really only had one question for you, Judge Sparks. And I guess Judge Gilliam as well. So this council was very motivated to see our code enforcement system work. And I just wanted to ask you, is it correct that Environmental Court is held every Wednesday?
I'm sorry, could you?
Is it correct that Environmental Court takes place every Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay. So how many cases were on the docket this morning?
There were.
Five. And last Wednesday?
I'm gonna pass them out to you.
Okay.
Give you a copy of the dockets for the last, since January.
Okay. So is it?
Since January.
Those would be cases that would be, would have received service to, the plaintiff would have received a.
There's been proper service.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Otherwise, cases don't get on the docket.
That's right. That's right. We also have, my team is bringing it over from the court, the breakdown of those cases by district. And the names of the individuals associated with those cases. And I think it might help you if you also had a copy of the process. And this is the same process that we've given to you before. Pass that out to let you know how they flow through the system.
Okay.
It's a simple graph. Simple graph. It shows you how it moves. And then the last thing that we're gonna provide for the council is, and some of this is old because we've been talking about this for a while. Remember, we talked about the one hundred top cases that we have. One of the things that we're going to do from the court, and we'll give this to mail to hand to you, is a spreadsheet. It's a spreadsheet that we're gonna provide monthly to you. It's going to lay out exactly what's happening with the cases. That's just one copyright. Lay out what's happening with each case is where it is in the process. Yeah. It's on front and back too. It's front and back.
Oh, okay.
So when you're, when you're with your constituents at a glance, you can look and see where the process is, where the case is in the process. So.
Okay. So it looks like, looking over the, I guess, the last four months, it looks like the docket ranges from as many as a couple of dozen cases to as few as, you know, a half dozen or so.
Yes, sir. That was a. I should tell you, this is, these are the environmental cases on that docket. We have other kinds of cases on that docket, but these are the environmental cases that are on that docket. So we obviously have capacity to do more cases. But this is what's been actually set on the docket and heard since the first Wednesday in January.
Okay. And would it be accurate to say that first settings means that those are new cases being brought before the court?
That's how we use the term when we made this graph.
Okay. And reviews are cases that are ongoing?
Reviews are cases that we have previously heard and have called back to check the status.
And is it typical that most of the, I mean, I guess this is not always the case, but oftentimes, the majority of the docket are reviews?
It's not unusual. I mean, we rarely is a case resolved on its initial setting or even the second setting. And if we have people with a number of issues to resolve, time is a factor in that, and we have to give them time to resolve that. So that's normal.
Okay. Any other councilors have questions? Counsel Moore?
I did. Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I'm looking for the amount of convictions or cases that we've been able to close. Is that something that's also tracked as well, or is that that document?
Yes, sir. And everybody's gonna get a copy of that, but we'll make it available to you monthly. And we'll have it broken down by your district, the properties in your district.
Got you. Thank you. And I guess with the reviews, I guess, how many settings do you usually need to, before you're able to make a decision on how you're going to enforce? Because I know that there are probably several cases that have come before you multiple times before. And does it even count if they show up or if they, they are no show or something?
The layout of the cases as we progress is on that larger document that we have. But it's not unusual. If a person doesn't show up, we have an FTA on them. Okay? So that, they are not included.
In this number.
That's an FTA. They do show up and there's some type resolution. They're trying to fix the property or they're doing whatever they need to, to come into compliance. Those are cases we typically set for a review to come back and see how well they've done. Now, of course, because we're in a criminal legal process, it's also possible that they come in and plead not guilty. And we have to set that case for trial. And so we'll have another setting for them to come back and we'll have to resolve it through that means as well. But that'll be indicated on the master form that we give you. And when there's a conclusion of the case, that's on there as well. If we dismissed it or if there's a plea and whatever the fine was, that's on that master form too.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Counsel Abbott.
So the Environmental Court is dealing with everything on the exterior of a house, like the yard and is it the house itself? Like if it's beginning to fall apart and cave in and the gutters are falling off and it needs a coat of paint?
Yes, ma'am. As far as the particulars are concerned, that's probably gonna be outside of all the particular requirements. I don't know all that. I don't know that we know all the particulars. But the cases do include outside the house and inside the house as well. So there are some things inside the house that can make the house dangerous for them to be in and have to be repaired, so.
Okay, but dangerous and ugly?
I'm sorry?
Dangerous and ugly. You know, the people who hadn't put a coat of paint on their house in forty-five years and it's all falling off into the bushes, those count too. So when I'm trying to figure out it's why there's so few cases when I feel like we turn in so much stuff. It's like a fire hose going in and a little trickle coming out.
Counsel Abbott, I can't speak to the number of cases. These are the cases that come to municipal court and that get to the process for us to deal with. That's the extent that I can comfortably talk to.
Okay. Well, yeah, I guess I'm just having a thought process here. Why is there so little in municipal court when we, you know, all we seem to get is these kind of complaints about properties that aren't being kept up and junk cars all over everything? And, you know, we turn them in, but they don't seem to be getting to you. It's hard for me to think that people are just saying, oh, of course, I'll fix everything up in a minute and it won't go to court. I don't know. Maybe I'm the only one who's got that problem.
Yeah, I think we're, you know, drilling down to the, you know, where we were before, which was, you know, these courses, these cases, the defendants, I guess, in these cases have to be properly served in order for those cases to get on the court docket. So the number of cases on the docket indicate how many people are being served to, with the summons to appear.
Okay, well.
Counsel Moore has a question. Then I'll come back to you.
So I guess, just kind of going back, I think one of the things that would be helpful for me and probably the rest of the council as well is the number of people that do have FTAs that are not showing up, because it'll just kind of give us a better understanding of how many people are just like falling through the cracks and that we need to, you know, possibly.
On the form, well, at the top of that, that master form, you don't have it. The master form, it indicates the number of people who are FTA on that. But now that's, there's some historical information off that one from the one hundred, top one hundred that we did. All right. There's a process in place now that's changing that. Out of these cases from the beginning of the year, these are, these are the actual cases that have made it to the docket. The total number of cases that have made it to the docket is included on this form right here. Okay, so in terms of who appeared and who did not appear, it's not going to exceed this fifty-eight cases that made it to the docket this year.
There's a clog in the pipeline. Somewhere.
Right. You good? Counsel Williams?
You know, when we last met on this item, my request, and I understand whatever, but I'll relay my request again. I asked that those people that just decide that they don't want to show up to court and that they will just not show up over and over and over again, I asked that the administration arrest them, which is the job of the administration if you don't show up to court. Three branches of government, that is the job. And I made that request at this last meeting when we discussed this because what I have found in my district is, is that even though people have been properly served because an Apost officer issued them the, 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 what we call a big, what we used to call a big ticket when I was a cop. I don't know what we call it now, but the big ticket, or they went and served, then that's proper service. And the same idiots that are wreaking havoc on our neighborhood know that they don't have to show up to court because they know that we won't go after them if they just decide I'm not gonna show up. So I have, you know, I want to reiterate my request that the administration, that BPD does its job and if someone has a warrant, to go after them. The second thing that I asked last time that I have not received an update on is why are these warrants not going into NCIC? Because if Birmingham police will not take someone to jail when they have a warrant, I promise you, Mountain Brook, Homewood, Vestavia, and Hoover will. And if they want to get, if people want to get FTAs because they don't feel like they have to show up to court, let them go get picked up by another jurisdiction and then get transferred over. And maybe they'll change their mind if they should show up to court, even if we let them out that second that they get to the Birmingham facility. That way, they will have had to have their car towed and that they will have the inconvenience of having to be transferred from one jurisdiction to another if we're entering it in NCIC. But I asked for those two updates last time. And I am frustrated because, you know, we've gone to such great lengths to make sure that we're doing this right. We have the City Attorney's Office that has an Apost officer there.
Two.
Two. We have Apost people in code enforcement now, which, which, you know, Valerie almost lost her hand over in that committee of the whole meeting. And the, you know, the issue, it, hold on, because I've asked for these updates. And I asked in an open meeting for them, and I was assured that I would get them from the administration.
So I will make sure that that is reiterated and relayed.
And I want that entered into NCIC and I want them arrested if they don't show up for court. I have to show up for court. Why, why, why do we, why do people get to choose if they don't show up to court for the city of Birmingham? I don't, I don't get that. If, if I don't show up in Mountain Brook, I promise you, if I get pulled over in Mountain Brook, I'm gonna be going to Mountain Brook City Jail. It's not, you know, it's just how it is. And so anyway, that, that is my continued request. And it's the same people in my district that are the problem.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
But thank you all for your, thank you all for your update.
Yes.
I think there's a lot more.
There's a lot more transparency into what, to everything that's going on since we started this process, since we've added Apost folks. Since we've, there's, there has been, there's been a lot of measured improvement, especially from Nicole's team as well. So thank you all for that, because, I mean, it's been something that we've all had to collectively work on.
Counsel Abbott?
Yeah, I do have a question that I have to ask. I haven't had that much experience with the legal system. And I wondered, if a person doesn't show up for court who's scheduled, then y'all put out a warrant for their arrest. And if a policeman stops them and they have a warrant for their arrest, it's up to the policeman to decide whether to arrest them or not? Is that how it works?
Can I speak to that?
So let me interject here. And so because we're getting into matters that should be in executive session, if this is going to continue during this route, I would like to recommend that we go into executive session under thirty-six, twenty-five, A seven, A three.
Yeah, I can find out from, I'm sure I can find out from someone else, but you know, I just, I haven't ever been arrested. I, I don't know how these things work, but I would assume, you know, I would assume if somebody put out a warrant for me and I got stopped for something else, they would check and find out I had a warrant and haul me off. But it doesn't sound like that's the way it works, but I'll find out elsewhere. I don't want us to go into an executive session. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. Professor Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all for providing this information. I just wanted to clarify, the large document, you're gonna start giving that to us monthly?
Yes, yes, we're gonna give it monthly and you're not gonna get that large document. We're gonna break it down by your district. So you're only getting what you need to have in your district. So you won't have to go through all that. I simply provided that today for you to see the detail that we're going to give when you, when you're with your constituents, you'll have that information.
Thank you, because it looks very similar to, you gave us the three that we had submitted. It's sort of from this type of.
Yes.
Same type of information.
Similar to the one that they use in PEP.
Okay.
We're trying to match them.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I believe that's all we got. Counsel Tate, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Judge Sparks, good evening.
Hello.
When I was reviewing it, I did see a lot of people in District Nine that had dates that went back long dates, like two thousand twelve, two thousand fourteen. Because I'm familiar with one of the situations that's on Twenty-Ninth Avenue in North Birmingham. What happens, I mean, like, just really trying to get, like, these violators that are out there decades ago, you know, I don't know if they are deceased or, you know, what's going on there? Like how, you know, of course, Apost officers would, you know, have to try to track these people down and serve them. What happens with, you know, these longevity situations?
Well, the ones that are on, let me explain this way. The ones that are on this list, we went back to that original discussion we had about the one hundred. And we use that as a template to show you what we're doing. Some of those cases have been resolved. Some of them never got proper service. But the new system that's been put in place, the new system that's been put in place is gonna go back, I think, and there's gonna be a historical review of those cases. And so we're gonna pull them back in through the new process and make sure they get the attention under the new system. So that's what's going to happen to them, I believe.
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, and that's correct. And so recall, that's just a benchmark of how it was before we got the Apost officers in OCA as well as PP. So that process, what you see in that template does not apply. That's gonna be restarted and we've already worked on those cases.
Okay, so the old cases are like, are like a top priority.
Yeah, not all of those in there are old. Some of them are new. In fact, at the bottom of it, there are new cases on there, but there are some on there that are old.
Yeah. I saw the news. I'm, you know, just referencing the old two thousand twelve, I saw some two thousand fourteen, seventeen. So those cases would become a high priority.
Yes.
And some of those, like Judge Sparks stated, there will be service, reserved.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to discussion of the short-term rental ordinance.
I know what you're planning on doing.
Does anyone need paper copies? Okay.
Yeah. We've got a lot of paper up here, so. Not sure if we have your paper.
Yeah, I guess we need to know what paper she has. These, yeah, this is what was. Oh, my favorite. I do like page numbers. I just love them.
Okay.
Yeah, when I'm gone, y'all don't quit putting page numbers on things. Other people like them too.
All right. I'm Kim Spurrell. I serve as the zoning administrator in the Department of Planning, Engineering, and Permits.
And I'm Julie Bernard. I serve as Assistant City Attorney in the Office of the City Attorney. And do you want me to start? Do you want to start? I'll just at least start with an introduction. Of course, we met with Planning and Zoning Committee, what, about a month ago, roughly? And got some, some direction from that committee about where to go with some of the zoning pieces. And we had discussed at that meeting, in a meeting individually with the councilors who were not on that committee. We have been able to meet with three of you. And the other three, we've not been able to get something scheduled. Appreciate the meetings that we had, got some, got some valuable feedback on that. And, you know, and our, our strategy was to take what came out of Planning and Zoning just as the way it did, you know, with what the recommendations of the committee were as far as the zoning. It took that. I didn't make any major changes to the regulatory, the general city code part, but I have, as I've spoken with the councilors, I've mentioned a few things that we talked about in Planning and Zoning about, you know, one thing is about going straight to revocation instead of having the suspension step and all of that. And, you know, but wanted to get some more feedback from the other councilors and do some more massaging on it. And I've made some notes, particularly Counsel Woods and Counsel Williams, particularly, I met more recently with them, the Counsel Tate, but, you know, incorporating some comments that we've gathered from the individual meetings we've had with those. So we'll be updating that piece of it. And still, you know, willing to hear from the, the councilors that we did not get to meet with before this meeting. And I'll, and I'm gonna let Kim explain, and then we can go back and forth.
So this document, that's the black and red, it might look a little confusing. So I was gonna explain what it actually is. We took all of our zoning districts and broke them down, single-family, multifamily, et cetera, et cetera. And then we provided options, all of the options that we've heard discussed over the past year for conditions for the zoning, for the short-term rentals. And the Planning and Zoning Committee voted on which preference for each district they would like to recommend. And so that's highlighted in red in the zoning document. So it is about nine pages long. I don't know if you guys want to go through district by district. But I've kind of been telling the councilors we've been meeting with, this was kind of like a choose-your-own-adventure. Choose your zoning district, then choose what you would like to see in that zoning district. And that's how we got to the selections from the Planning and Zoning Committee. And if you guys would like for us to delve deeper into that, we can gladly do that. It's whatever the committee's pleasure is.
Could you just give us a, a general overview, you know, and, and talk about the, you know, just how you separated out these zone districts? So E one, R one, D one, R two, D two, R three, D three, those are all single-family districts. And, you know, each consecutive page is basically a group of zone districts that kind of represent a cluster of the type of zoning, correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct. So the first page, and you'll see every option for each district is exactly the same, all of the options. All of the options were not permitted, permitted, subject to the code requirements, permitted, subject to a one percent cap and short-term rental drawing, or some folks like to call that a lottery, permitted by special exception through ZBA, and then they kind of start building on each other. So permitted to one percent cap lottery and special exception, permitted to, subject to a spacing requirement, permitted, subject to the one percent cap, a drawing and a spacing requirement, or all of them added together, permitted, subject to the cap, the drawing, the spacing, and the special exception. As Counselor O'Quinn said, we did, our zoning districts are grouped in a very easy way in our zoning ordinance. So the first page is just those districts that allow single-family residential, no multifamily, no commercial. Then we group together what we call our medium-density zoning districts. Those are gonna allow for single-family townhouses in duplexes. And then we have your multiple dwelling, which we call high-density residential, which are gonna be your larger apartment buildings. And so we split those into three. And then, if you recall, last summer, we added the new urban neighborhood district, which does allow single-family and it allows multifamily up to twelve units. So we have that one separate. Then we have our mixed-use districts. We have mixed-use low, medium, high, and downtown. And all of those districts allow for a mix of commercial and residential uses. Then we have just our regular commercial districts, our planned mixed-use. And then we have our agricultural districts that, there, there aren't that many left in the city, but we do have some agricultural districts.
Okay. And then within those zone districts, we're differentiating between a short-term rental and short-term rentals that are hosted homestays.
Yes, we, we heard from a lot of the short-term rental owners, as well as from some of the councilors, that they would like to see. um, that they would like to see a differentiation between the short-term rentals that no one lives in, that they are used solely for a short-term rental. Um, so someone owns it, they don't live in the house, but it is on platforms available to rent out as a short-term rental. And then we added what we called a hosted homestay, and that would be a short-term rental where the resident of the house lives in the house at least seventy-five percent of the calendar year. So it might be someone who has a two-story house, and they might live on one level, and they might be able to rent out the lower level, um, a basement unit that they might rent out as a short-term rental, or even a, an above-garage unit, but the resident does live in the home. Um, and a lot of cities that we've researched split those up, and they have different regulations um depending on whether it's a whole house versus just a portion of the house with the resident living there.
Okay, so um, you know, I think the zoning document is pretty self-explanatory um going through those different uh types of zone districts, so why don't you walk us through the actual ordinance?
Okay, and as mentioned, you know, this would be um, you know, amendment to the general city code, um, and so there's been some language, there was a draft that's been seen previously, there's been some language added, um, you know, I got some feedback before Planning and Zoning from Counselor Abbott, and pretty much her, you know, comments were incorporated here, I think I've caught one or two things that might not have been picked up in it, um, but um, so it gives a purpose, and part of what's added is, you know, to protect the residential character of neighborhoods and reduce nuisance, as well as, you know, safeguard peace, safety, and welfare of the residents and visitors of the city. Um, and we've added some definitions, Counselor Abbott asked for a definition for bedroom, and that's been, you know, that's in this draft. Um, so there are definitions here, got some general requirements and regulations, and after some of the conversations we've had, there's some um tweaks that I'm making here, um, that, you know, I felt probably it's covered, but maybe good to add something, I know we've had specific discussion about the lodging tax, we have a provision in here about the permittee, who's the owner would have to collect or admit all applicable taxes and fees required by state law or city law, which would include all the lodging taxes, plus the three dollar per night, that applies to all transient lodging in the city, so that would have to be collected. But I'm gonna add that specific language here, um, and it, it's covered, but it doesn't hurt to put it in. Um, so um, I'm gonna do a little more clarification, we had a discussion about the garbage disposal part, and I think there was some confusion about the part I added in about the property owner, including the usable trash and recycling containers, and I've been looking at that, and I think I get some language in there, make sure it's clear, it says they're supposed to abide by the city's solid waste ordinance, but I can put some language in to clarify that. Um, and then, you know, there's a list of restrictions, there's still a few questions, we had a list of comments that were forwarded from the council. You'll see in here, there's some, we made, I made, and I made some notes where I made changes based on those comments that were provided, or feedback from the council earlier on, um, there's some where I still have some, you know, say, there's something suggested here from the council, but I haven't made that exact change here, that's something to, you know, from the council to recommend which way we wanna go. We did tighten up, we had, you know, I'll read what our previous provision said about parties and things, we said no commercial events, special events, parties, weddings, receptions, concerts, or large gatherings shall be allowed in a short-term rental. We're replacing that with where it says a short-term rental may only be used for overnight accommodations and shall not be used for weddings, bachelor or bachelorette parties, commercial events, special events, parties, concerts, or any gathering exceeding the maximum occupancy allowed for the short-term rental, which there is a, you know, maximum occupancy in this for the short-term rental. Um, we, there, there is a little, in the, in the original, we have that accessory dwelling units may not be used as a short-term rental, one of the comments we had back from the council had recommended removing the prohibition on accessory dwelling units, the SDRs are allowed everywhere. So if we are, if they are going to not be allowed in single-family, we'll look at that and see whether there's, you know, places where ADUs would be allowed or not. And um we're gonna add the language that mobile homes, RVs, travel trailers, tents, vehicles, and similar non-permanent structures may not serve as short-term rentals. Yeah, they need to be permanent structures, um, and one, Counselor Abbott, where I caught, where it didn't get struck about the part about the inspection, you did, you wanted it to take out that the property owner had to agree to the inspection, I'll make sure that comes out, um, and.
I think you already took it out.
Yeah, well somehow it wound back up in here, in what it, so I'll make sure, we, it, it was supposed to come out, and then it's, I looked and it was still there, so I've got it marked to take it out, and we'll take it out. Um, we've added some provisions about quiet hours and things like that. Um, it's been suggested that we have all the short, all the front-street-facing security cameras connect to the real-time crime center. Um, it's also been suggested we look at if we do have provisions where it's a homestay that, you know, unless, you know, we're thinking about this, um, you know, if it's a separate entrance, you know, maybe the camera needs to be had, but if it's like just renting a bedroom in the house, then the camera would not be a correct requirement because somebody would be living there on the premises. Um, and um requiring some, uh, we already had said they need to comply with the noise ordinance, but we'll probably will need to reconcile this, I think what we want to have is something where the police have something in their hands if they know it's a short-term rental, that they've got something, and they're not having to go and go, is this a violation of this, and look, you know, put some things in here directly, um, so may adjust some of these details here about the noise, um, you know, in quiet hours and things like that, I mean, I would hope that neighbors would be observing quiet hours for their neighbors already. Um, they um pulled some provisions, I'm talking with some of the hosts, many of them have noise monitors, um, the uh, and many of the hosts that we talked with suggested that that be required. And there are some platforms that have partnered with noise monitoring companies that have these kinds of noise monitors. And um, so, you know, and looked, and they, at least the one I've looked at, it's not voice recording, there was concern about privacy. You know, we want something, you know, add some language in here that it's not, it doesn't record voice, it's just recording levels, it's just basically giving a decibel level and would, you know, go to the host or their resp, local responsible party to know, you know, if those levels are high. So they will check and see, are there too many people there, what's going on, is there a party, you know, something like that, that's kinda how it's used. So um, the uh, and generally, you know, in on decibel charts, normal speech is usually about sixty to, could be up to seventy, but usually around sixty decibels. Eighty is kind of, could be kinda loud, could be traffic noise, you know, heavier traffic noise. I was looking, do we want to put, you know, a thing that it triggers at a certain decibel level, I've been trying to find out if there's something within the systems that suggest a way to set it, anyway, I'm, you know, trying to see that, or whether we should put, you know, if it exceeds this for this, you know, if it triggers and you see it's going for more, yeah, for a lengthy part of time, then they need to respond. Um, and um there were concerns about, you know, short-term rental, I put in a provision that not generate more traffic or different types of traffic than of vehicle traffic than home occupied by a permanent resident. Um, we're also, because we have back earlier, um, it refers back to the zoning ordinance about parking um and no recreational vehicles, buses, or trailers, probably need to say commercial in there. And uh, put in a provision that refers back to the on-street parking regulations that are in the city code, 'cause I think that's where we get a lot of our complaints is, you know, if they're not using them for parties, it should help. But you wind up with cars parked up and down, uh, the street, blocking the street, so that's what we want to avoid, and um, so uh, various things, we changed the uh local responsible party has to live within a ten-mile radius of the subject property. Uh, it probably gives roughly a fifteen-minute, you know, uh, window that they might be able to get there, it might take longer, you know, depends on traffic, that kinda thing. Um, we had a requirement for that they have a booklet, and we're, we'll, we'll develop a booklet for the city, you know, from the city that will include what our regulations are, you know, information, uh, you know, who somebody needs to contact, those kinds of things, uh, so that we have a minimum amount of information that has to be included in the booklet that will inform guests of what's going on, um. I've had a suggestion that we make sure, and again, this is something the council can decide, one of the suggestions I've had is that we make the application fees um for the permits, you know, make it clear that that goes to the program for the enforcement, you know, for the support of the permitting and enforcement, that's really kind of what the law would require anyway. But um, I don't know that it hurts to put that in there, um, that that's what the purpose of that fee is. Um, requiring that they go through some kind of certification program, both the host and the local responsible party, and if they change local responsible party, they'll have to get a certification for that person. Um, you know, we've talked to some people who are working on developing a course here, there's at le, you know, there's several courses that are called, there's one um that I actually talked to the person who um, who developed it that's used nationally, and um there's, you know, and has certain components, so we've listed out, you know, what at a minimum it would require, which would be licensing and registration requirements, short-term rental laws and restrictions, guest screen, screening and security measures, safety and security protocols, cleaning and waste management, understanding short-term rental taxes, tax reporting and filing guidelines, good neighbor relations, and reducing nuisance problems and liabilities. Uh, we would want, you know, of course, to focus on those things. Um, and then the permit is not transferable, um, and um, that's addressed in another section. We discussed in, I think the recommendation, Planning and Zoning, is that we take out the suspension of the permit and just go straight to, it would come to revocation, um, you know, directly to the council if we had problems. Um, we would want to notify, we're gonna require them to tell us what platforms they're advertising on when they apply. And then, yeah, if we go to a revocation, we would notify the platforms that they've been brought up for revocation, and then we would require the uh platform to remove them from their site if they're revoked. Because part of this is gonna be if they, they get their permit, they will have to display their permit number with any place where they advertise the rental, so if it doesn't ha, you know, if it's on a platform and it doesn't have a permit on it, then that would be kicking into, we would investigate, we find out they don't have a permit, then we would have, we would notify the platform that they can't be on there, I mean, the platform should know that, that we would go through processes to deal with that. Um, violations, um, again, the, um, and I've added a C to that section, I don't know if that's necessarily the best place for it to be. But um, yeah, obviously, the um, first couple of things about, you know, unlawful for anybody violating, you know, for the short-term rental, and also for any transient occupant to violate applicable uh ordinances or city regulations, including things like noise ordinance, solid waste parking violations, et cetera. Um, and that's enforceable by police department or applicable code enforcement official. Uh, but added, um, Counselor Williams had a specific um request about how can the police deal with people who need to be removed from the property. And of course, these are short-term rentals, the transient rentals generally are not gonna fall under Fair Housing or um, the Uniform Landlord-Tentant Act, Alabama's Uniform Landlord-Tentant Act. I say generally, there are things people can do that might transform them, but generally, you know, it's a short-term transient rental. Um, you know, this is, again, they are transient lodging, which they have in common with hotels, but they are not really hotels. Never said they were not businesses, um, they are businesses, they provide transient lodging. And so I looked to the regulations that the state has for hotels, and they have a process there for a hotel owner or manager to remove disorderly guests, and so this is adapt, adapted from that provision, which it does allow for a hotel manager to call on local police to remove a guest who refuses to leave and is causing a problem. So um, this, it's been massaged to more fit the short-term rental situation. So, which, we've heard from some hosts that, you know, they've had a situation at one location in one precinct, and they got a response, and they got a little bit different response in another precinct, so we kinda wanna get that where it can happen clearly. And the last section is if we decide to go, you know, if we do finally go with some of the one percent cap the way that the drawing would be held.
One question that I have is, um, so are, I think there's section, section twelve twenty-three dash four restrictions, and it says, "The short-term rental owner shall not receive any compensation to permit occupancy of a short-term rental for a period of less than two consecutive nights," I understand that.
Mm-hmm.
"The maximum stay for any guest shall be thirty consecutive days." So my question is, is that, um, as I understand it, some of the short-term rental booking platforms allow um renters to book the property for thirty days or more. So how do we reconcile that?
I, you know, and I do think, you know, as I mentioned, as long as it's transient, then, you know, there, there's, you know, it, Fair Housing generally does not apply to transient, the, the Alabama Uniform Landlord-Tentant, Residential Landlord-Tentant Act, um, you know, expressly states it doesn't apply to transient, I, you know, if they start getting into longer periods, then they might start triggering some issues where they're subject to Landlord-Tentant Act and things like that to get people out. I can't tell you specifically at this point where that point is, but that could be a possibility. Um, but we can look at your question, actually.
Yeah, I, I didn't know if we were gonna it's, I don't know if this would be, you know, uh, possible, but you know, it, the way it reads, it says, you know, the maximum stay for any guest shall be thirty consecutive days, so to me, that says, you know, you can't list your property for
More than thirty days.
For more than thirty-day rentals.
And if that's what we go with, there are, as I've mentioned in some of the conversations we had, and I think we mentioned it, Planning and Zoning, um, PP has been in discussion with um some services, you know, for one thing, you know, we recently purchased a seller and have had that up and running for the permitting. That would allow us, you know, a platform here within the city for the permit applications and all of that to happen, but there are companies, national companies, that have services that go and they scrape the internet looking for short-term rentals, looking for people who are, you know, renting things that fall within what your ordinance says. And um, so that would, you know, give us some way, it's something that it's really hard, you know, it to have somebody who's just sitting there every day going through, you know, going to Verbo or Airbnb or some other, you know, website and, and going through the properties, because you don't know where they are exactly until you click on the listing and say you're booking it, you know, it, it would be very tedious for someone to do that, if we can get some technology to allow, you know, that would superpower our ability to check what's out there, that would be a help.
So, I mean, that sort of gets into the operation side of things, but um, I mean, I assume since you're, you guys have discussed it and are thinking about it, you, you would be um, I mean, I don't know how you, how you do this without employing that type of service, so it seems like pretty much essential. Would you agree?
And that's, well, I know, I know, I'll let Ms. Pearl speak to some of what PEP, you know, is looking at as far as, you know, staffing and what we already have, but I know I sat in on one of the demonstrations that we had, and I mean, they're basically saying, "Give us your ordinance." Um, they can put in some things that, you know, like where letters could be sent through that service, although we can probably do that through a seller too. But they feel like, you know, "Give us your ordinance, we can set some things up, we can go out and look for what's going on," we just, you know.
Yeah.
So, it would.
And I would add, Councilor Quinn, we are looking um, at a, a full-time staff person, and this would be their responsibility, they would be our short-term rental program manager. Um, they would obviously be in our department, um, and they would be in um, most likely the planning and zoning division. Um, but we feel like we would need a full-time staff person to manage the program, as well as be the coordinator with the company that we select to help us with the scraping and with the mapping and everything of the short-term rentals.
Okay, Council Williams.
Uh, a, a couple of things, and this might be out of decorum, so, um, Dr. Aquim, excuse me, what's the cons-, I'm confused on the concern of if someone stays over thirty days?
Well.
Because they wouldn't, this, at that point, this ordinance wouldn't be applicable, correct? Because it's really a long-term lease.
Where, yes, that's, I mean, because we've defined it as being less than thirty consecutive days as being a short-term rental.
That's what the majority of other cities, their cutoff is thirty days.
My, my two cents on, and I didn't know where you were going with that, so I was kind of asking you, but my two cents on that is, you know, the to me, what, so, a, a lot of people have reached out to me and I've learned a lot about short-term rentals that, and I've anyway, way more than I've ever wanted to know about short-term rentals, but it, a lot, some people will go on Verbo or Airbnb or whatever app you go on. And, you know, they might be a uh, a claims adjuster in Birmingham, or some of them are doing like, um, a lot of medical students apparently live in my district that are doing a rotation that is like a certain number of months, so it's not like a short-term stay, but then they might commute, they might go back to Auburn or Tuscaloosa, or um, do something with a fellowship, where they do research at UAB, and then go back to Chicago. There's all these different wild scenarios where I think that they've utilized the app, or these apps to have a place to stay, but they might not really be there every day, but they use it, and it, and it did, it did turn into like a long-term kind of thing, and so I want to be cognizant of that, because um, honestly, that's the best kind of neighbor you can have as a research person that's there. Rarely.
Yeah, the only reason I ask is because, you know, we're, I mean, on these platforms, you can rent a short-term rental for two nights or three months, you know? Um, so, if you're renting it for more than thirty days, is it a short-term rental anymore? So.
Not, not the way it's written here, no, it's not.
So, I.
And, and I'd say, you know, a lot of what we see, again, you know, you mentioned, you know, the two consecutive nights, yeah, and I did, there was a comment on that list of comments that we had from the council, where a counselor who suggested three nights in residential dwelling duristic, district, sorry, and um, the, in urban neighborhoods, um, you know, and we hear, we hear different things, but you know, it's one thing, I think where we see most of the nuisance behavior and what we hear from host, and I think even from some residents who have been very vocal, you know, and given us a lot of feedback, um, is, yeah, the, the one night, the people who rent for, you know, for one night, a lot of times, there's going to be a party. And for the most part, those are local people, you know, they're not, you know, but there are, from hearing from some of the super hosts that have talked with us, um, you know, they do have people like during the week, but they say on the weekend, they will not rent for one night. Um, because they know that, you know, they just say, you know, you gotta have two nights. And that is, you know, and they also say the platform often blocks them from seeing where the person is coming from until they get to the booking it, and sometimes they turn them down if they see it's from Birmingham, because I think that's what we're seeing, I mean, just to be honest, I think what we see with some of these problems that happen are people who, they want to do things that they don't want, they're, they don't want to bother their neighbors with it, they don't want to tear up their house, so they're going to go to somebody else's neighborhood and tear up somebody else's house, or they don't want mama to know this, you know, they're having this party or whatever. So, um, we, um, you know, that, that's why we had at least two-night minimum to try to reduce that, although some of the hosts have said, "Could we not have one night during the week?" Because you have somebody who comes in for a medical school interview, or, you know, just for, you know, something that's a quick, a quick turnaround for them. That's just what we've heard, again, this is what we have here now, that's something for the council to, you know, advise on where we go with that, and also, again, we chose the thirty days, because that's pretty consistent across the state and across the country, is how short-term rentals are defined, I've seen some that define it as twenty-eight days, and some may define it as thirty-two days. Um, and I can do a little more research, you know, I've researched some with uh, you know, like how fair housing applies and where the Landlord Tenet Act would come in, I can do a little bit more research and see if there's, you know, a timing. I've, I've seen some of that, but I just can't recall everything at the moment. But, you know, that, that's, when you start getting into the longer-term rental, then somebody might have a claim under the Landlord Tenet Act, and that requires them to go through the court eviction process, and I mean, there's actually, I mean, there's been some nightmare stories in some other states I've read about where somebody does a short-term rental, and then they stay and stay, and it's taken people years to get that person out of their house under the eviction laws of that state.
Right.
So, um, so I think we want to keep this to thirty days or less. I mean, I think that makes it a short-term rental, but it's kind of like, then if it's longer-term, it's not under this.
Okay, and so, and then a cou- couple more things, because I'm about to have to run in a couple
Sure.
Five o'clock meeting, but the um, just so that the council is aware of what we talked about uh, when it came to this, is one of my concerns is equity when it comes to our hoteliers. Um, you know, we have assessed them not only a lodging tax, but also a three-night, three-dollar-a-night room tax, so not only, so our hoteliers are paying, you know, a percentage of whatever they cost um, to the city and to uh, all the other litany of, of governmental hands that are out in that over seventeen percent, but they're also paying a three dollars on top of that, and so there has, there, and, and speaking um, at Convention and Visitors Bureau with a lot of these hotel groups, you know, there has to be equity in that, you know, if, if the hoteliers have to pay the three dollars a night, then it's fair that everybody pays three dollars a night. And what we, what we kind of discussed yesterday is something that um, that I'm sure Julie's excited about, because it's going to be kind of complex in terms of research, but it's going to really find a way that we make sure that we're capturing that um, revenue, both from a taxation, as well as the surcharge per night from a business license standpoint, and coming at it that way. Um, and so that's something that we discussed yesterday, just so everyone's aware of what, what my concerns are, were that, and then BPD's specific outlined response, so that we don't get two different um, responses from two different precincts or two different officers, whatever, you know, there, there, there can be a cheat sheet of, okay, this is not a civil matter, this is a criminal matter, I am allowed to remove these people from this house. Obviously, if that would have, would have happened at other Airbnbs where we've had issues, I don't think some of the issues would have developed into the issues that we ended up having, not, not naming any specific case or issue that we had. And then the other thing that um, I wanted us to be cognizant of, from a, you know, I want us to get this right. I know we're not going to make, I know we're, I know we're going to make a lot of people mad, no matter what, but I do want to get this right, and I want it to be fair um, to our taxpayers, the residents, um, but also our businesses, the hotel groups, and, and really everybody. And one thing that, you know, it might take some time to get this right. I don't want to push something through that's half-baked and that there be unintended, unintended consequences. And what I'm specifically meaning by that is we have a event this summer, World Police and Fire Games, where we have an unusual group when it comes to travel. And what I mean by unusual group is, these people are coming as a family unit, so it's not just, you know, someone that's competing and would be more, you know, apt to stay in a hotel room, this is a family vacation, they're coming as a family unit, meaning kids, whatever, whoever's in the family. So, you know, Airbnbs are going to be very heavily utilized while we host this event this upcoming summer, um, and so I want us to all be cognizant of the fact that um, you know, those reservations have been made, and there's been an expectation of an event that we're hosting based on our current ordinance, um, you know, that, and I just want everybody to be cognizant of that, and, and, and um, I don't want us to shoot ourselves in the foot, because we did something uh, you know, out of haste and not thinking about it, so those are my friendly comments to my colleagues.
If I, may I, may I, yeah, may I address about the tax, you know, issue just a minute, and I know, you know, I've talked, we've talked about it in various forms, I, you know, just want to make sure, you know, brought it back out. We, we've also learned some things through having the various meetings that we've had, but we, you know, we do know, we currently have a voluntary collection agreement with Airbnb. That's the only one that I know of that we have, which means they basically step into the, the, the tax is the responsibility of the host, whoever owns the house, whoever's renting it, the lodging tax, um, and the business license is their responsibility. Um, but for the purposes of lodging tax, Airbnb is automatically collecting lodging taxes on our website, you know, on their website, when you book in the city of Birmingham. Yeah, they're provided with the map, city limits of Birmingham, all of that. So, they are doing that, they have made an exception that they don't collect if the entity, the owner has a business license already, and I know there was at least one local Bed and Breakfast that was advertising on a platform. So there are, and there are some hotels, I don't think I've seen any Birmingham hotels advertising on these, but I've seen in some other cities where hotels advertise. It was becoming an accounting nightmare, so they said, "If you show us you've got a business license and you're set up to pay your taxes to whatever jurisdiction it is, then we won't automatically impose that tax on your rentals." But, you know, but you've got to show us that you've got your business license and everything in place, and you're dealing directly with the jurisdiction yourself. We have found, there are some, some of the hosts that we've talked with have talked about, they come down and get their business license, and that should turn on all their taxes, you know, for that property and all of that. So we know there are some um, that are happening, and that should be, for them, that should be across whether they rent on Airbnb or Verbo or bookings.com or whatever they might rent on, it should, you know, tie into their total revenue for that property. There are others that we know don't have licenses, um, we, you know, and that will be a way to target within this, is to go and look and see who doesn't have licenses. Um, there are, I know, I'm not going to talk to it, because um, I don't want to misstate, but, you know, there are processes in tax and license as to how when somebody hasn't, you know, is delinquent on their taxes or hasn't had a business license, and there's, if they're delinquent, there's so many years they can go back, if they haven't had a business license, you can go as I understand it, all the way back, if I remember correctly, so don't quote me on it, but that's what I recall from it. So in other words, there would be ways, then once we get this in place and people start getting their licenses, to see if we can capture. Um, if they, if we haven't received our taxes, there's ways in procedures under tax and license to capture taxes that should have been paid to the city. And, you know, to make it clear that um, they, that they are responsible for the lodging tax. So, and when they get their permit, get their business license, that lodging tax will be turned on. So, um, but I just want to say there's ways to go back and capture that.
Other questions?
I don't have questions, I have comments.
Uh, Councilor Abbott.
Okay, thank you. Um, I went through and compared draft three dash A with changes slash notes that was provided from y'all. What is, in our packet is draft three
Oh, okay.
With changes and notes, so how do we know which version of draft three we're looking at now?
It should be the one that says with changes slash notes.
Okay, but there's one that says draft three A with changes draught slash notes, and one that just says draft three with changes slash notes. So, which one is the right one?
This is the one right now that says.
So what is A?
I don't know.
Well, y'all did it.
I don't think I did, I don't know if that's the one you did.
Well, we didn't write our own, but anyway, okay.
Well, you, you marked, you marked up one.
I did with the bedroom.
And the one, yeah, and so those things that you had marked up were in this draft.
Okay, well, but this one has been corrected by you.
Mm-hmm.
Because I co-, I compared it with my notes from the last meeting, and there were several things that popped up to my attention. Number one, we don't have a definition of a resident. And I think we need to add definition of what a resident actually is, because there are people who confuse, are confused, they think if somebody spends the night in our city, they're a resident. And that is completely insane. Anyway, so we need a definition of a resident, and um, on page two, we have, we, we say that they can have two people per bedroom plus two. What is the plus two for? Just so we can get an extra car?
There, I mean, there, you know, some um, have bedrooms, there are some that you go to, you have a pull-out couch, you know, a place people can sleep in a common area. So, um.
Well, my personal feeling is that the plus two should go. I mean, we're, and let me get on to the other part, which will support that. The um, on page, on page four, and thank you for the page numbers, item F, "The owner is to provide a site plan showing the entire property, including the location and number of off-street parking spaces available for use by the renter." Okay, so we're going to have to change our parking ordinance to require off-street parking spaces available for use by these renters in order to make that the truth. And if you have a four-bedroom house and four, you know, eight people show up and there's four cars, then four cars need to park somewhere. And if it, now, of course, we have, we have recommended to the council that they not be in single-family neighborhoods, but even some of our multiple-family neighborhoods have single-family homes that don't have parking. And so we have to provide a way to not ruin people's neighborhoods by having wads of cars showing up, parking all over everywhere and taking up all the parking. Especially if people are relegated to on-street parking only. You know, there are neighborhoods where there is no parking at people's homes because at people's homes because they didn't invent cars until after the homes were built. So, somehow, we've got to address that, but only, I mean, it's a problem. We don't wanna create problems for our actual residents while we're helping people to own, you know, to operate these businesses in the neighborhood. Um, so, to me, that, that needs to be somehow coordinated.
Counsel Abbott, could I explain why we added that to F? Um, so, as part of their permit application, they do provide us the site plan. If they do have off-street parking spaces, we're asking that they be included on the site plan because we've heard and seen photographs of short-term rentals who have guests that park on other people's property, um, whether it be a neighbor or a vacant lot down the street. And so, when we do get those calls, so we can do proper enforcement, we can pull their site plan, and we can verify what is on their property and what parking is actually allowed and what they provide. So, that helps us when it comes to enforcement to know that, yes, they have two parking spaces perhaps on-site, and they've identified them, but if the neighbor, if they're accidentally parking on their neighbor's property and they didn't know it, then we actually have that site plan to use for our enforcement. So, that one's actually more for us than it is for them.
Okay, but we still need to require that they have someplace for these large numbers of vehicles to park. That's on us. The city of Birmingham, if, if we allow these things, we have to accommodate the people who actually live in the neighborhoods, not just the people who are dropping in for the night or two. I guess it's two at least. So, then on page two, the cooking and food preparation, I just wanted to understand, it's item, um, F. No food shall be prepared for or served to the transient in the short-term rental for a party or other special event. So, who's preparing this food? Is this the?
Well, they're not operating, we don't want them operating as restaurants or, you know, other things. That's, yeah, catering, yeah.
Okay, because we've already said they can't have parties or special events, right?
This is just double coverage.
Okay. Then item G, right under that, cooking facilities. It seems to me that, um, even though we're not at, we're saying they can't have gas appliances or two-twenty-volt electric appliances, it seems that these structures need to be code-compliant, because you don't want an S T R that has like knob and tubing wiring, having cooking in every room, because the house, if it burns down, will set the houses on either side on fire because they're so close to each other. So, it seems that code compliance for at least electrical and plumbing would be important for life safety.
They, I mean, they would be, and I think this is saying, you know, this, this is saying cooking facilities are not, you know, so you wouldn't be able to have natural gas in a bedroom. Um, I, I don't think we can prohibit there being natural gas appliances. So, reading this, it's read to be, you can't have, you know, the cooking facilities that aren't, yeah, aren't allowed, and but basically, that's, you don't, you know, basically, we don't want them to have, you know, have, you know, turn into little mini, you know, units.
But I, I think somewhere we need to say that the structure where the S T R is going needs to be code-compliant somewhere. You know, you might assume that, but you can't assume anything in this world where people will do anything to skirt the law. So, code compliance is big, especially in older structures. I mean, I guess a new, a new, a new building or a new facility, it wouldn't be as big of a deal, but if it was something that was very old, you could set it on fire very quickly. And the neighbors really get upset when that happens. Um, and back to page three, oh, over to page three. We had talked about, um, the principal renter of the short-term rental being at least twenty-five years of age, and I think it needs to just stop there. This three positive reviews from short-term rental pla- platforms. No.
So, we just wanna make that.
I think, I mean, y'all.
Changed the nineteen to twenty-five. I have a note that that's, you know, what was in the council comments, so.
Yeah, well, there's another sentence on this sheet that says, any principal renter under the age of twenty-five must have at least three positive reviews from existing short-term rental platforms. Well, we need to ditch that. I don't know where it came from, but, um.
Basically, those are some, that's a regulation that some platforms use. Um, some of the platforms allow people as young as eighteen to rent, but eighteen-year-olds can't contract in the state of Alabama, so. Well, they can, but you can't enforce it against them.
And, you know, my, we have had someone who scraped the internet for our short-term rentals, and as of January tenth, twenty-twenty-five, we have one thousand eight hundred and fifteen just on Airbnb and Verbo. That doesn't count any other platforms. Twelve hundred and fifty are Airbnb, that's sixty-eight point nine percent, and five hundred and sixty-five are Verbo, thirty-one percent, and the rest of them, we don't even know about yet. So, I think you can see that we're chock-a-block with these things, and they, then they're a scraping business. They identified where they all are. So, now, our tax people can go and find them inside their little abodes, and we can identify all of them. But we have far too many, is I believe, our problem. And if indeed what P E P tells us is true, that we have a housing shortage, you know, I am just really thinking that these things do not belong in residential zone districts. If we care about Birmingham being the third or fourth largest city in Birmingham, in Alabama, then I guess we can just go ahead and let all our housing go and not have residents, you know, because what do we need them for? So, I think that this is an important, um, thing for us to consider, is the people who are looking for a place to live and the increasing costs of housing as these, these houses are bought up and turned into mini hotels. That means no children in the schools and no residents in the city. And I think that we've, you know, if we space them out and we have a reasonable number, maybe we'll be fine, but I think it's something important for us to think about, because we, we know who gets the complaints. In fact, Mrs. Tate is probably getting a complaint right now. But we, we know, we know who hears the complaints. We know who goes to the neighborhood meetings and gets chewed up and spit back out again. So, um, I just wanted to throw that in, but these things are important. The definition of resident, the plus two, the figuring out how we're gonna deal with parking, even if we have to edit our lovely parking ordinance, and the no renters under twenty-five years, and code compliance. I think that those are all important issues that we need to be sure we address, because like Counselor Williams said, we, we would like to get it right. You know, it's hard to get it right, because unintended consequences always come to bite you somewhere where it hurts. But, um, we just need to get as close as we can. And this eighteen hundred and fifty, the eighteen hundred and fifteen that we have right now, you know, fortunately, we can identify where every, every one of these are, and we can tell all the people who've been operating illegally for the last, you know, five years. But the issue is not that, it's the issue is our housing is being taken up by businesses, and that's a problem. If it is true that we have a housing shortage. So, just something to chew on. Cause I don't want the school in my neighborhood to close. No, I, I want us to have children and people living in our city. You know, the one you can go borrow a cup of sugar from, because I can guarantee you that people visiting S T Rs don't bring sugar with them. And that's all.
All right. Any additional discussion or questions? So, we have some outstanding comments and questions, um, so, I'm going to suggest, since nobody's just jumping out there and saying it, that we, um, table this for the time being and allow staff some time to respond.
If I could suggest, since tabling is just till the end of the, the meeting, let's, let's defer it for a, a month or three weeks or sometimes certain, so that we, everybody has a, a date to shoot at, so that we don't drag this out forever.
Okay.
So.
I'll second that.
So, y'all tell us how much time you need, because we don't wanna put you under too much pressure.
Do you wanna defer it, I mean, do you want, do you wanna defer it to the next C O W or, um?
Is that in two weeks?
Uh, no, the next C O W would be in May, um.
Yeah.
Okay, so one month.
Yeah, the four weeks that you mentioned.
Okay.
Just to have something to shoot at.
All right. So, we'll, I'll, I'll second that motion. Um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so, that issue is deferred to next month's committee of the whole meeting. Um, we have a planning commission.
I will say, again, you know, some of the counselors that we didn't meet with, if they want to discuss anything with the ordinance with me, I'm glad to talk with them or email me, you know, thoughts, suggestions, whatever.
Right. Okay, thank you. There's a planning commission meeting scheduled to happen here in the council chambers, um, right now. So, um, rather than, uh, we'll, having our council administrators report now, we'll defer that to another time. So, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.